We'll call the meeting to order. City Council, City of Rialto, Acting Successor Agency to the Redevelopment Agency Rialto, Utilities Authority, Rialto Housing Authority. At this time we'll call on the clerk to call, roll call.
Mayor Baca.
Here.
Sorry, Mayor Baca. Mayor Protem Scott.
Present.
Councilmember Carrie Simmons.
Present.
Councilmember Perez.
Present.
Councilmember Watoya.
Present.
City Attorney Eric Vell.
Present.
Acting City Manager Tanya Williams.
Present.
Thank you. So at this time I'll call on the city attorney to give us a report.
Thank you, Mayor. There are four regular scheduled items on your closed session for this evening. The city chief did bring, or police chief did bring to my attention yesterday an item that he wanted the council to add as an item of subsequent need. And police chief has advised that there has arisen a subsequent, subsequent in the preparation of the agenda, the need for immediate action by council in closed session having to do with threat to public services and/or facilities. The city council can add this pursuant to government code section 54952b2.
Do I have a motion to add this to the agenda? Motion's been made by Ed Scott. Seconded by Andy Kullisettis. Okay, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Do we need a roll call? Everybody is unanimous.
That, that item is added. The police chief has requested that given the timeliness and sensitivity of this issue that you take it first in closed session and then we can follow on with the regular order.
Is there any members in the audience that wish to address the council at this point? Seeing none? Do I hear a motion to go into closed session? Motion been made by Andy. Seconded by Ed Scott. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Ayes? Three ayes?
No, there's five ayes.
Oh, I didn't hear the other two.
Actually, there's ten ayes.
Okay. Unanimous. We'll go into closed session. Motion's been made by Ed Scott. Seconded by Andy Kullisettis. Okay, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Do we need a roll call? Everybody is unanimous.
That, that item is added. The police chief has requested that given the timeliness and sensitivity of this issue that you take it first in closed session and then we can follow on with the regular order.
Is there any members in the audience that wish to address the council at this point? Seeing none? Do I hear a motion to go into closed session? Motion been made by Andy. Seconded by Ed Scott. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Ayes? Three ayes?
No, there's five ayes.
Oh, I didn't hear the other two.
Actually, there's ten ayes.
Okay. Unanimous. We'll go into closed session. Motion's been made by Ed Scott. Seconded by Andy Kullisettis. Okay, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Ayes? Three ayes?
No, there's five ayes.
Oh, I didn't hear the other two.
Actually, there's ten ayes.
Okay. Unanimous. We'll go into closed session. Do I have a motion to add this to the agenda? Motion's been made by Ed Scott. Seconded by Andy Kullisettis. Okay, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Ayes? Three ayes?
No, there's five ayes.
Oh, I didn't hear the other two.
Actually, there's ten ayes.
Okay. Unanimous. We'll go into closed session. Do I have a motion to add this to the agenda? Motion's been made by Ed Scott. Seconded by Andy Kullisettis. Okay, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Ayes? Three ayes?
No, there's five ayes.
Oh, I didn't hear the other two.
Actually, there's ten ayes.
Okay. Unanimous. We'll go into closed session. Do I have a motion to add this to the agenda? Motion's been made by Ed Scott. Seconded by Andy Kullisettis. Okay, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Ayes? Three ayes?
No, there's five ayes.
Oh, I didn't hear the other two.
Actually, there's ten ayes.
Okay. Unanimous. We'll go into closed session. Do I have a motion to add this to the agenda? Motion's been made by Ed Scott. Seconded by Andy Kullisettis. Okay, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Ayes? Three ayes?
No, there's five ayes.
Oh, I didn't hear the other two.
Actually, there's ten ayes.
Okay. Unanimous. We'll go into closed session. Do I have a motion to add this to the agenda? Motion's been made by Ed Scott. Seconded by Andy Kullisettis. Okay, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Ayes? Three ayes?
No, there's five ayes.
Oh, I didn't hear the other two.
Actually, there's ten ayes.
Okay. Unanimous. We'll go into closed session. Do I have a motion to add this to the agenda? Motion's been made by Ed Scott. Seconded by Andy Kullisettis. Okay, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Ayes? Three ayes?
No, there's five ayes.
Oh, I didn't hear the other two.
Actually, there's ten ayes.
Okay. Unanimous. We'll go into closed session. Do I have a motion to add this to the agenda? Motion's been made by Ed Scott. Seconded by Andy Kullisettis. Okay, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Ayes? Three ayes?
No, there's five ayes.
Oh, I didn't hear the other two.
Actually, there's ten ayes.
Okay. Unanimous. We'll go into closed session. Do I have a motion to add this to the agenda? Motion's been made by Ed Scott. Seconded by Andy Kullisettis. Okay, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Ayes? Three ayes?
No, there's five ayes.
Oh, I didn't hear the other two.
Actually, there's ten ayes.
Okay. Unanimous. We'll go into closed session. Do I have a motion to add this to the agenda? Motion's been made by Ed Scott. Seconded by Andy Kullisettis. Okay, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Ayes? Three ayes?
No, there's five ayes.
Oh, I didn't hear the other two.
Actually, there's ten ayes.
Okay. Unanimous. We'll go into closed session. Do I have a motion to add this to the agenda? Motion's been made by Ed Scott. Seconded by Andy Kullisettis. Okay, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Ayes? Three ayes?
No, there's five ayes.
Oh, I didn't hear the other two.
Actually, there's ten ayes.
Okay. Unanimous. We'll go into closed session. Do I have a motion to add this to the agenda? Motion's been made by Ed Scott. Seconded by Andy Kullisettis. Okay, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Ayes? Three ayes?
No, there's five ayes.
Oh, I didn't hear the other two.
Actually, there's ten ayes.
Okay. Unanimous. We'll go into closed session. Do I have a motion to add this to the agenda? Motion's been made by Ed Scott. Seconded by Andy Kullisettis. Okay, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Ayes? Three ayes?
No, there's five ayes.
Oh, I didn't hear the other two.
Actually, there's ten ayes.
Okay. Unanimous. We'll go into closed session. Do I have a motion to add this to the agenda? Motion's been made by Ed Scott. Seconded by Andy Kullisettis. Okay, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Ayes? Three ayes?
No, there's five ayes.
Oh, I didn't hear the other two.
Actually, there's ten ayes.
Okay. Unanimous. We'll go into closed session. Do I have a motion to add this to the agenda? Motion's been made by Ed Scott. Seconded by Andy Kullisettis. Okay, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Ayes? Three ayes?
No, there's five ayes.
Oh, I didn't hear the other two.
Actually, there's ten ayes.
Okay. Unanimous. We'll go into closed session. Do I have a motion to add this to the agenda? Motion's been made by Ed Scott. Seconded by Andy Kullisettis. Okay, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Ayes? Three ayes?
No, there's five ayes.
Oh, I didn't hear the other two.
Actually, there's ten ayes.
Okay. Unanimous. We'll go into closed session. Do I have a motion to add this to the agenda? Motion's been made by Ed Scott. Seconded by Andy Kullisettis. Okay, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Ayes? Three ayes?
No, there's five ayes.
Oh, I didn't hear the other two.
Actually, there's ten ayes.
Okay. Unanimous. We'll go into closed session. Do I have a motion to add this to the agenda? Motion's been made by Ed Scott. Seconded by Andy Kullisettis. Okay, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Ayes? Three ayes?
No, there's five ayes.
Oh, I didn't hear the other two.
Actually, there's ten ayes.
Okay. Unanimous. We'll go into closed session. Do I have a motion to add this to the agenda? Motion's been made by Ed Scott. Seconded by Andy Kullisettis. Okay, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Ayes? Three ayes?
No, there's five ayes.
Oh, I didn't hear the other two.
Actually, there's ten ayes.
Okay. Unanimous. We'll go into closed session. Do I have a motion to add this to the agenda? Motion's been made by Ed Scott. Seconded by Andy Kullisettis. Okay, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Ayes? Three ayes?
No, there's five ayes.
Oh, I didn't hear the other two.
Actually, there's ten ayes.
Okay. Unanimous. We'll go into closed session. Do I have a motion to add this to the agenda? Motion's been made by Ed Scott. Seconded by Andy Kullisettis. Okay, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Ayes? Three ayes?
No, there's five ayes.
Oh, I didn't hear the other two.
Actually, there's ten ayes.
Okay. Unanimous. We'll go into closed session. Do I have a motion to add this to the agenda? Motion's been made by Ed Scott. Seconded by Andy Kullisettis. Okay, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Ayes? Three ayes?
No, there's five ayes.
Oh, I didn't hear the other two.
Actually, there's ten ayes.
Okay. Unanimous. We'll go into closed session. Do I have a motion to add this to the agenda? Motion's been made by Ed Scott. Seconded by Andy Kullisettis. Okay, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Ayes? Three ayes?
No, there's five ayes.
Oh, I didn't hear the other two.
Actually, there's ten ayes.
Okay. Unanimous. We'll go into closed session. Do I have a motion to add this to the agenda? Motion's been made by Ed Scott. Seconded by Andy Kullisettis. Okay, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Ayes? Three ayes?
No, there's five ayes.
Oh, I didn't hear the other two.
Actually, there's ten ayes.
Okay. Unanimous. We'll go into closed session. Do I have a motion to add this to the agenda? Motion's been made by Ed Scott. Seconded by Andy Kullisettis. Okay, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Ayes? Three ayes?
No, there's five ayes.
Oh, I didn't hear the other two.
Actually, there's ten ayes.
Okay. Unanimous. We'll go into closed session. Do I have a motion to add this to the agenda? Motion's been made by Ed Scott. Seconded by Andy Kullisettis. Okay, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Ayes? Three ayes?
No, there's five ayes.
Oh, I didn't hear the other two.
Actually, there's ten ayes.
Okay. Unanimous. We'll go into closed session. Do I have a motion to add this to the agenda? Motion's been made by Ed Scott. Seconded by Andy Kullisettis. Okay, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Ayes? Three ayes?
No, there's five ayes.
Oh, I didn't hear the other two.
Actually, there's ten ayes.
Okay. Unanimous. We'll go into closed session. Do I have a motion to add this to the agenda? Motion's been made by Ed Scott. Seconded by Andy Kullisettis. Okay, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Ayes? Three ayes?
No, there's five ayes.
Oh, I didn't hear the other two.
Actually, there's ten ayes.
Okay. Unanimous. We'll go into closed session. Do I have a motion to add this to the agenda? Motion's been made by Ed Scott. Seconded by Andy Kullisettis. Okay, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Ayes? Three ayes?
No, there's five ayes.
Oh, I didn't hear the other two.
Actually, there's ten ayes.
Okay. Unanimous. We'll go into closed session. Do I have a motion to add this to the agenda? Motion's been made by Ed Scott. Seconded by Andy Kullisettis. Okay, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Ayes? Three ayes?
No, there's five ayes.
Oh, I didn't hear the other two.
Actually, there's ten ayes.
Okay. Unanimous. We'll go into closed session. Do I have a motion to add this to the agenda? Motion's been made by Ed Scott. Seconded by Andy Kullisettis. Okay, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Ayes? Three ayes?
No, there's five ayes.
Oh, I didn't hear the other two.
Actually, there's ten ayes.
Okay. Unanimous. We'll go into closed session. Do I have a motion to add this to the agenda? Motion's been made by Ed Scott. Seconded by Andy Kullisettis. Okay, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Ayes? Three ayes?
No, there's five ayes.
Oh, I didn't hear the other two.
Actually, there's ten ayes.
Okay. Unanimous. We'll go into closed session. Do I have a motion to add this to the agenda? Motion's been made by Ed Scott. Seconded by Andy Kullisettis. Okay, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Ayes? Three ayes?
No, there's five ayes.
Oh, I didn't hear the other two.
Actually, there's ten ayes.
Okay. Unanimous. We'll go into closed session. Do I have a motion to add this to the agenda? Motion's been made by Ed Scott. Seconded by Andy Kullisettis. Okay, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Ayes? Three ayes?
No, there's five ayes.
Oh, I didn't hear the other two.
Actually, there's ten ayes.
Okay. Unanimous. We'll go into closed session. Do I have a motion to add this to the agenda? Motion's been made by Ed Scott. Seconded by Andy Kullisettis. Okay, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Ayes? Three ayes?
No, there's five ayes.
Oh, I didn't hear the other two.
Actually, there's ten ayes.
Okay. Unanimous. We'll go into closed session. Do I have a motion to add this to the agenda? Motion's been made by Ed Scott. Seconded by Andy Kullisettis. Okay, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Ayes? Three ayes?
No, there's five ayes.
Oh, I didn't hear the other two.
Actually, there's ten ayes.
Okay. Unanimous. We'll go into closed session. Do I have a motion to add this to the agenda? Motion's been made by Ed Scott. Seconded by Andy Kullisettis. Okay, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Ayes? Three ayes?
No, there's five ayes.
Oh, I didn't hear the other two.
Actually, there's ten ayes.
Okay. Unanimous. We'll go into closed session. Do I have a motion to add this to the agenda? Motion's been made by Ed Scott. Seconded by Andy Kullisettis. Okay, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Ayes? Three ayes?
No, there's five ayes.
Oh, I didn't hear the other two.
Actually, there's ten ayes.
Okay. Unanimous. We'll go into closed session. Do I have a motion to add this to the agenda? Motion's been made by Ed Scott. Seconded by Andy Kullisettis. Okay, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Ayes? Three ayes?
No, there's five ayes.
Oh, I didn't hear the other two.
Actually, there's ten ayes.
Okay. Unanimous. We'll go into closed session. Do I have a motion to add this to the agenda? Motion's been made by Ed Scott. Seconded by Andy Kullisettis. Okay, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Ayes? Three ayes?
No, there's five ayes.
Oh, I didn't hear the other two.
Actually, there's ten ayes.
Okay. Unanimous. We'll go into closed session. Do I have a motion to add this to the agenda? Motion's been made by Ed Scott. Seconded by Andy Kullisettis. Okay, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Ayes? Three ayes?
No, there's five ayes.
Oh, I didn't hear the other two.
Actually, there's ten ayes.
Okay. Unanimous. We'll go into closed session. Do I have a motion to add this to the agenda? Motion's been made by Ed Scott. Seconded by Andy Kullisettis. Okay, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Ayes? Three ayes?
No, there's five ayes.
Oh, I didn't hear the other two.
Actually, there's ten ayes.
Okay. Unanimous. We'll go into closed session. Do I have a motion to add this to the agenda? Motion's been made by Ed Scott. Seconded by Andy Kullisettis. Okay, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Ayes? Three ayes?
No, there's five ayes.
Oh, I didn't hear the other two.
Actually, there's ten ayes.
Okay. Unanimous. We'll go into closed session. Do I have a motion to add this to the agenda? Motion's been made by Ed Scott. Seconded by Andy Kullisettis. Okay, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Ayes? Three ayes?
No, there's five ayes.
Oh, I didn't hear the other two.
Actually, there's ten ayes.
Okay. Unanimous. We'll go into closed session. Do I have a motion to add this to the agenda? Motion's been made by Ed Scott. Seconded by Andy Kullisettis. Okay, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Ayes? Three ayes?
No, there's five ayes.
Oh, I didn't hear the other two.
Actually, there's ten ayes.
Okay. Unanimous. We'll go into closed session. Do I have a motion to add this to the agenda? Motion's been made by Ed Scott. Seconded by Andy Kullisettis. Okay, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Ayes? Three ayes?
No, there's five ayes.
Oh, I didn't hear the other two.
Actually, there's ten ayes.
Okay. Unanimous. We'll go into closed session. Do I have a motion to add this to the agenda? Motion's been made by Ed Scott. Seconded by Andy Kullisettis. Okay, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Ayes? Three ayes?
No, there's five ayes.
Oh, I didn't hear the other two.
Actually, there's ten ayes.
Okay. Unanimous. We'll go into closed session. Do I have a motion to add this to the agenda? Motion's been made by Ed Scott. Seconded by Andy Kullisettis. Okay, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Ayes? Three ayes?
No, there's five ayes.
Oh, I didn't hear the other two.
Actually, there's ten ayes.
Okay. Unanimous. We'll go into closed session. Do I have a motion to add this to the agenda? Motion's been made by Ed Scott. Seconded by Andy Kullisettis. Okay, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Ayes? Three ayes?
No, there's five ayes.
Oh, I didn't hear the other two.
Actually, there's ten ayes.
Okay. Unanimous. We'll go into closed session. Do I have a motion to add this to the agenda? Motion's been made by Ed Scott. Seconded by Andy Kullisettis. Okay, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Ayes? Three ayes?
No, there's five ayes.
Oh, I didn't hear the other two.
Actually, there's ten ayes.
Okay. Unanimous. We'll go into closed session. Do I have a motion to add this to the agenda? Motion's been made by Ed Scott. Seconded by Andy Kullisettis. Okay, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Ayes? Three ayes?
No, there's five ayes.
Oh, I didn't hear the other two.
Actually, there's ten ayes.
Okay. Unanimous. We'll go into closed session. Do I have a motion to add this to the agenda? Motion's been made by Ed Scott. Seconded by Andy Kullisettis. Okay, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Ayes? Three ayes?
No, there's five ayes.
Oh, I didn't hear the other two.
Actually, there's ten ayes.
Okay. Unanimous. We'll go into closed session. Do I have a motion to add this to the agenda? Motion's been made by Ed Scott. Seconded by Andy Kullisettis. Okay, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Ayes? Three ayes?
No, there's five ayes.
Oh, I didn't hear the other two.
Actually, there's ten ayes.
Okay. Unanimous. We'll go into closed session. Do I have a motion to add this to the agenda? Motion's been made by Ed Scott. Seconded by Andy Kullisettis. Okay, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Ayes? Three ayes?
No, there's five ayes.
Oh, I didn't hear the other two.
Actually, there's ten ayes.
Okay. Unanimous. We'll go into closed session. Do I have a motion to add this to the agenda? Motion's been made by Ed Scott. Seconded by Andy Kullisettis. Okay, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Ayes? Three ayes?
No, there's five ayes.
Oh, I didn't hear the other two.
Actually, there's ten ayes.
Okay. Unanimous. We'll go into closed session. Do I have a motion to add this to the agenda? Motion's been made by Ed Scott. Seconded by Andy Kullisettis. Okay, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Ayes? Three ayes?
No, there's five ayes.
Oh, I didn't hear the other two.
Actually, there's ten ayes.
Okay. Unanimous. We'll go into closed session. Do I have a motion to add this to the agenda? Motion's been made by Ed Scott. Seconded by Andy Kullisettis. Okay, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Ayes? Three ayes?
No, there's five ayes.
Oh, I didn't hear the other two.
Actually, there's ten ayes.
Okay. Unanimous. We'll go into closed session. Do I have a motion to add this to the agenda? Motion's been made by Ed Scott. Seconded by Andy Kullisettis. Okay, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Ayes? Three ayes?
No, there's five ayes.
Oh, I didn't hear the other two.
Actually, there's ten ayes.
Okay. Unanimous. We'll go into closed session. Do I have a motion to add this to the agenda? Motion's been made by Ed Scott. Seconded by Andy Kullisettis. Okay, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Ayes? Three ayes?
No, there's five ayes.
Oh, I didn't hear the other two.
Actually, there's ten ayes.
Okay. Unanimous. We'll go into closed session. Do I have a motion to add this to the agenda? Motion's been made by Ed Scott. Seconded by Andy Kullisettis. Okay, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Ayes? Three ayes?
No, there's five ayes.
Oh, I didn't hear the other two.
Actually, there's ten ayes.
Okay. Unanimous. We'll go into closed session. Do I have a motion to add this to the agenda? Motion's been made by Ed Scott. Seconded by Andy Kullisettis. Okay, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Ayes? Three ayes?
No, there's five ayes.
Oh, I didn't hear the other two.
Actually, there's ten ayes.
Okay. Unanimous. We'll go into closed session. Do I have a motion to add this to the agenda? Motion's been made by Ed Scott. Seconded by Andy Kullisettis. Okay, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Ayes? Three ayes?
No, there's five ayes.
Oh, I didn't hear the other two.
Actually, there's ten ayes.
Okay. Unanimous. We'll go into closed session. Do I have a motion to add this to the agenda? Motion's been made by Ed Scott. Seconded by Andy Kullisettis. Okay, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Ayes? Three ayes?
No, there's five ayes.
Oh, I didn't hear the other two.
Actually, there's ten ayes.
Okay. Unanimous. We'll go into closed session. Do I have a motion to add this to the agenda? Motion's been made by Ed Scott. Seconded by Andy Kullisettis. Okay, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Ayes? Three ayes?
No, there's five ayes.
Oh, I didn't hear the other two.
Actually, there's ten ayes.
Okay. Unanimous. We'll go into closed session. Do I have a motion to add this to the agenda? Motion's been made by Ed Scott. Seconded by Andy Kullisettis. Okay, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Ayes? Three ayes?
No, there's five ayes.
Oh, I didn't hear the other two.
Actually, there's ten ayes.
Okay. Unanimous. We'll go into closed session. Do I have a motion to add this to the agenda? Motion's been made by Ed Scott. Seconded by Andy Kullisettis. Okay, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Ayes? Three ayes?
No, there's five ayes.
Oh, I didn't hear the other two.
Actually, there's ten ayes.
Okay. Unanimous. We'll go into closed session. Do I have a motion to add this to the agenda? Motion's been made by Ed Scott. Seconded by Andy Kullisettis. Okay, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Ayes? Three ayes?
No, there's five ayes.
Oh, I didn't hear the other two.
Actually, there's ten ayes.
Okay. Unanimous. We'll go into closed session. Do I have a motion to add this to the agenda? Motion's been made by Ed Scott. Seconded by Andy Kullisettis. Okay, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Ayes? Three ayes?
No, there's five ayes.
Oh, I didn't hear the other two.
Actually, there's ten ayes.
Okay. Unanimous. We'll go into closed session. Do I have a motion to add this to the agenda? Motion's been made by Ed Scott. Seconded by Andy Kullisettis. Okay, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Ayes? Three ayes?
No, there's five ayes.
Oh, I didn't hear the other two.
Actually, there's ten ayes.
Okay. Unanimous. We'll go into closed session. Do I have a motion to add this to the agenda? Motion's been made by Ed Scott. Seconded by Andy Kullisettis. Okay, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Ayes? Three ayes?
No, there's five ayes.
Oh, I didn't hear the other two.
Actually, there's ten ayes.
Okay. Unanimous. We'll go into closed session. Do I have a motion to add this to the agenda? Motion's been made by Ed Scott. Seconded by Andy Kullisettis. Okay, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Ayes? Three ayes?
No, there's five ayes.
Oh, I didn't hear the other two.
Actually, there's ten ayes.
Okay. Unanimous. We'll go into closed session. Do I have a motion to add this to the agenda? Motion's been made by Ed Scott. Seconded by Andy Kullisettis. Okay, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Ayes? Three ayes?
No, there's five ayes.
Oh, I didn't hear the other two.
Actually, there's ten ayes.
Okay. Unanimous. We'll go into closed session. Do I have a motion to add this to the agenda? Motion's been made by Ed Scott. Seconded by Andy Kullisettis. Okay, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Ayes? Three ayes?
No, there's five ayes.
Oh, I didn't hear the other two.
Actually, there's ten ayes.
Okay. Unanimous. We'll go into closed session. Do I have a motion to add this to the agenda? Motion's been made by Ed Scott. Seconded by Andy Kullisettis. Okay, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Ayes? Three ayes?
No, there's five ayes.
Oh, I didn't hear the other two.
Actually, there's ten ayes.
Okay. Unanimous. We'll go into closed session. Do I have a motion to add this to the agenda? Motion's been made by Ed Scott. Seconded by Andy Kullisettis. Okay, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Ayes? Three ayes?
No, there's five ayes.
Oh, I didn't hear the other two.
Actually, there's ten ayes.
Okay. Unanimous. We'll go into closed session. Do I have a motion to add this to the agenda? Motion's been made by Ed Scott. Seconded by Andy Kullisettis. Okay, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Ayes? Three ayes?
No, there's five ayes.
Oh, I didn't hear the other two.
Actually, there's ten ayes.
Okay. Unanimous. We'll go into closed session. Do I have a motion to add this to the agenda? Motion's been made by Ed Scott. Seconded by Andy Kullisettis. Okay, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Ayes? Three ayes?
No, there's five ayes.
Oh, I didn't hear the other two.
Actually, there's ten ayes.
Okay. Unanimous. We'll go into closed session. Do I have a motion to add this to the agenda? Motion's been made by Ed Scott. Seconded by Andy Kullisettis. Okay, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Ayes? Three ayes?
No, there's five ayes.
Oh, I didn't hear the other two.
Actually, there's ten ayes.
Okay. Unanimous. We'll go into closed session. Do I have a motion to add this to the agenda? Motion's been made by Ed Scott. Seconded by Andy Kullisettis. Okay, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Ayes? Three ayes?
No, there's five ayes.
Oh, I didn't hear the other two.
Actually, there's ten ayes.
Okay. Unanimous. We'll go into closed session. Do I have a motion to add this to the agenda? Motion's been made by Ed Scott. Seconded by Andy Kullisettis. Okay, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Ayes? Three ayes?
No, there's five ayes.
Oh, I didn't hear the other two.
Actually, there's ten ayes.
Okay. Unanimous. We'll go into closed session. Do I have a motion to add this to the agenda? Motion's been made by Ed Scott. Seconded by Andy Kullisettis. Okay, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Ayes? Three ayes?
No, there's five ayes.
Oh, I didn't hear the other two.
Actually, there's ten ayes.
Okay. Unanimous. We'll go into closed session. Do I have a motion to add this to the agenda? Motion's been made by Ed Scott. Seconded by Andy Kullisettis. Okay, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Ayes? Three ayes?
No, there's five ayes.
Oh, I didn't hear the other two.
Actually, there's ten ayes.
Okay. Unanimous. We'll go into closed session. Do I have a motion to add this to the agenda? Motion's been made by Ed Scott. Seconded by Andy Kullisettis. Okay, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Ayes? Three ayes?
No, there's five ayes.
Oh, I didn't hear the other two.
Actually, there's ten ayes.
Okay. Unanimous. We'll go into closed session. Do I have a motion to add this to the agenda? Motion's been made by Ed Scott. Seconded by Andy Kullisettis. Okay, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Ayes? Three ayes?
No, there's five ayes.
Oh, I didn't hear the other two.
Actually, there's ten ayes.
Okay. Unanimous. We'll go into closed session. Do I have a motion to add this to the agenda? Motion's been made by Ed Scott. Seconded by Andy Kullisettis. Okay, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Ayes? Three ayes?
No, there's five ayes.
Oh, I didn't hear the other two.
Actually, there's ten ayes.
Okay. Unanimous. We'll go into closed session. Do I have a motion to add this to the agenda? Motion's been made by Ed Scott. Seconded by Andy Kullisettis. Okay, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Ayes? Three ayes?
No, there's five ayes.
Oh, I didn't hear the other two.
Actually, there's ten ayes.
Okay. Unanimous. We'll go into closed session. Do I have a motion to add this to the agenda? Motion's been made by Ed Scott. Seconded by Andy Kullisettis. Okay, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Ayes? Three ayes?
No, there's five ayes.
Oh, I didn't hear the other two.
Actually, there's ten ayes.
Okay. Unanimous. We'll go into closed session. Do I have a motion to add this to the agenda? Motion's been made by Ed Scott. Seconded by Andy Kullisettis. Okay, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Ayes? Three ayes?
No, there's five ayes.
Oh, I didn't hear the other two.
Actually, there's ten ayes.
Okay. Unanimous. We'll go into closed session. Do I have a motion to add this to the agenda? Motion's been made by Ed Scott. Seconded by Andy Kullisettis. Okay, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Ayes? Three ayes?
No, there's five ayes.
Oh, I didn't hear the other two.
Actually, there's ten ayes.
Okay. Unanimous. We'll go into closed session. Do I have a motion to add this to the agenda? Motion's been made by Ed Scott. Seconded by Andy Kullisettis. Okay, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Ayes? Three ayes?
No, there's five ayes.
Oh, I didn't hear the other two.
Actually, there's ten ayes.
Okay. Unanimous. We'll go into closed session. Do I have a motion to add this to the agenda? Motion's been made by Ed Scott. Seconded by Andy Kullisettis. Okay, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Ayes? Three ayes?
No, there's five ayes.
Oh, I didn't hear the other two.
Actually, there's ten ayes.
Okay. Unanimous. We'll go into closed session. Do I have a motion to add this to the agenda? Motion's been made by Ed Scott. Seconded by Andy Kullisettis. Okay, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Ayes? Three ayes?
No, there's five ayes.
Oh, I didn't hear the other two.
Actually, there's ten ayes.
Okay. Unanimous. We'll go into closed session. Do I have a motion to add this to the agenda? Motion's been made by Ed Scott. Seconded by Andy Kullisettis. Okay, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Ayes? Three ayes?
No, there's five ayes.
Oh, I didn't hear the other two.
Actually, there's ten ayes.
Okay. Unanimous. We'll go into closed session. Do I have a motion to add this to the agenda? Motion's been made by Ed Scott.[1527.10]
Meeting will come to order.
Meeting will come to order.
Sir? Sir?
The City Council, City of Rialto, Acting Successor Agency to the Redevelopment The City Council, City of Rialto, Acting Successor Agency to the Redevelopment The City Council, City of Rialto, Acting Successor Agency to the Redevelopment Agency,
update, try to give it to more of a visual effect on what's happening with the new police
Agency, the Rialto Utilities Authority, Rialto Housing Authority, come to order with Agency, the Rialto Utilities Authority, Rialto Housing Authority, come to order with the Rialto Utilities Authority, Rialto Housing Authority, come to order with a clerk call
station. And it's actually really nice to see people in the audience that may not actually
a clerk call the roll. a clerk call the roll. the roll.
Mayor Barca? Mayor Barca? Mayor Barca?
see what's happening across the street and also those people at home. So, Gabe, if I
Present.
Council, Mayor Potem Scott?
Present.
can get you to key this up, please?[674.14][674.14](MUSIC)
Councilmember Carrie Sadas?
Present. Present.
Present.
(MUSIC)
Council, Mayor Potem Scott? Council, Mayor Potem Scott? Councilmember Perez?
(MUSIC)
Present.
Present. Present.
(MUSIC)
Councilmember Moretoya? Councilmember Carrie Sadas? Councilmember Carrie Sadas?
(MUSIC)
Present.
Present. Present.
(MUSIC)
Council, City Treasurer, Eric Correa? Councilmember Perez? Councilmember Perez?
(MUSIC)
Present.
Present. Present.
(MUSIC)
City Attorney, Eric Vell? Councilmember Moretoya? Councilmember Moretoya?
(MUSIC)
Present.
Present. Present.
(MUSIC)
Acting City Manager, Tanya Williams?
(MUSIC)
Council, City Treasurer, Eric Correa? Council, City Treasurer, Eric Correa?
Present.
(MUSIC)
Okay, all present accounted for at this time. What we'll do is stand up for the Pledge
(MUSIC)
Present. Present.
(MUSIC) (MUSIC)
City Attorney, Eric Vell? City Attorney, Eric Vell?
(MUSIC)
Present. Present.
(MUSIC) (MUSIC)
Acting City Manager, Tanya Williams? Acting City Manager, Tanya Williams?
Allegiance, be led by Councilmember Carla Perez.
(MUSIC) (MUSIC)
Present. Present.
(MUSIC) (MUSIC)
Okay, all present accounted for. At this time, what we'll do is stand up for the Okay, all present accounted for. At this time, what we'll do is stand up for the
Put your right hand over your heart, ready to begin.
(MUSIC) 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 (MUSIC)
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic
(MUSIC) 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 (MUSIC)
for which it stands, my nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
(MUSIC) 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 (MUSIC)
Could you please remain standing? We'll do the invocation by Jose Andel. Okay, all present accounted for. At this time, what we'll do is stand up for the
We pause for a moment. God Almighty, to reflect on your power, your grace, we believe that
Pledge Allegiance, be led by Councilmember Carla Perez.
Pledge Allegiance, be led by Councilmember Carla Perez.
Pledge Allegiance, be led by Councilmember Carla Perez.
Put your right hand over your heart, ready to begin. Put your right hand over your heart, ready to begin. Put your right hand over your heart, ready to begin.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic
you are with us and we praise you. We ask that as we come together as members of the
for which it stands, my nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for for which it stands, my nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for for which it stands, my nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
City Council, that your blessings will be upon them, the mayor, and all of us as we
all. all. all.
Could you please remain standing? We'll do the invocation by Jose Andel. Could you please remain standing? We'll do the invocation by Jose Andel. Could you please remain standing? We'll do the invocation by Jose Andel.
We pause for a moment. God Almighty, to reflect on your power, your grace, we believe We pause for a moment. God Almighty, to reflect on your power, your grace, we believe We pause for a moment. God Almighty, to reflect on your power, your grace, we believe ask for your presence in our hearts and in this beautiful city of Rialto and our country and throughout the world. We bless you and we ask that you, your blessings will be upon that you are with us and we praise you. We ask that as we come together as members that you are with us and we praise you. We ask that as we come together as members of that you are with us and we praise you. We ask that as we come together as members us. In your name we pray, amen. of the City Council, that your blessings will be upon them, the mayor, and all of of the City Council, that your blessings will be upon them, the mayor, and all of the City Council, that your blessings will be upon them, the mayor, and all of us as
Amen. At this time, I'll call in the City Attorney and report on closed session.
us as we ask for your presence in our hearts and in this beautiful city of Rialto and us as we ask for your presence in our hearts and in this beautiful city of Rialto and we ask for your presence in our hearts and in this beautiful city of Rialto and our
Thank you, Mayor. Tonight, we had five items on your closed session. There were
our country and throughout the world. We bless you and we ask that you, your blessings our country and throughout the world. We bless you and we ask that you, your blessings country and throughout the world. We bless you and we ask that you, your blessings will
four items on your regular published agenda. The fifth item was an item of subsequent need
will be upon us. In your name we pray, amen. will be upon us. In your name we pray, amen. be upon us. In your name we pray, amen.
requested by the police chief under the title of threat to public facilities. The council,
Amen. 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 At this time, I'll call in the City Attorney and report on closed session. At this time, I'll call in the City Attorney and report on closed session. At this time, I'll call in the City Attorney and report on closed session.
under the Brown Act, did add that by unanimous vote, and you had a briefing from the police chief on those items. The first item on your regular calendar was a conference with your labor negotiators. You did have a conference with both the acting city manager and the Thank you, Mayor. Tonight, we had five items on your closed session. There were Thank you, Mayor. Tonight, we had five items on your closed session. There were Thank you, Mayor. Tonight, we had five items on your closed session. There were human resources director. There was no other reportable action. You had a conference with four items on your regular published agenda. The fifth item was an item of subsequent four items on your regular published agenda. The fifth item was an item of subsequent four items on your regular published agenda. The fifth item was an item of subsequent need legal counsel with regard to one item of anticipated litigation. You gave direction need requested by the police chief under the title of threat to public facilities. The need requested by the police chief under the title of threat to public facilities. The requested by the police chief under the title of threat to public facilities. The council, to the city attorney's office with regard to that item. There's no other reportable action on that. You had a conference with real property negotiators with regard to council, under the Brown Act, did add that by unanimous vote, and you had a briefing council, under the Brown Act, did add that by unanimous vote, and you had a briefing under the Brown Act, did add that by unanimous vote, and you had a briefing from the police the property described on the agenda in item three. You did give direction. There was from the police chief on those items. The first item on your regular calendar was a from the police chief on those items. The first item on your regular calendar was a chief on those items. The first item on your regular calendar was a conference with no other reportable action. And then finally, you had a public employee appointment discussion conference with your labor negotiators. You did have a conference with both the acting conference with your labor negotiators. You did have a conference with both the acting your labor negotiators. You did have a conference with both the acting city manager and the with regard to item four. There was no reportable action, but that item is also on your agenda city manager and the human resources director. There was no other reportable action. You city manager and the human resources director. There was no other reportable action. You human resources director. There was no other reportable action. You had a conference with for this evening under your tabs. Thank you. had a conference with legal counsel with regard to one item of anticipated litigation. had a conference with legal counsel with regard to one item of anticipated litigation. legal counsel with regard to one item of anticipated litigation. You gave direction
Are there any questions for the City Attorney? Hearing none. Everybody go hear
You gave direction to the city attorney's office with regard to that item. There's You gave direction to the city attorney's office with regard to that item. There's to the city attorney's office with regard to that item. There's no other reportable
a motion to approve?
So moved.
no other reportable action on that. You had a conference with real property negotiators no other reportable action on that. You had a conference with real property negotiators
Moved, move made by Carlos?
action on that. You had a conference with real property negotiators with regard to
Second.
Second of by Andy Garcia. All those who favor signify by saying aye.
with regard to the property described on the agenda in item three. You did give direction. with regard to the property described on the agenda in item three. You did give direction. the property described on the agenda in item three. You did give direction. There was
Aye.
Motion carries. Thank you very much. At this time, we'll have the presentations
There was no other reportable action. And then finally, you had a public employee appointment There was no other reportable action. And then finally, you had a public employee appointment no other reportable action. And then finally, you had a public employee appointment discussion discussion with regard to item four. There was no reportable action, but that item is discussion with regard to item four. There was no reportable action, but that item is with regard to item four. There was no reportable action, but that item is also on your agenda
and proclamations, but before we call in on our Parks Recreation Director, I just wanted
also on your agenda for this evening under your tabs. Thank you. also on your agenda for this evening under your tabs. Thank you. for this evening under your tabs. Thank you.
to say that I'm wearing this tie in honor of Black History Month. We must remember Are there any questions for the City Attorney? Hearing none. Everybody go hear Are there any questions for the City Attorney? Hearing none. Everybody go hear Are there any questions for the City Attorney? Hearing none. Everybody go hear that this whole month, we're celebrating Black History Month, remembering many of a motion to approve? a motion to approve? a motion to approve?
So moved. So moved. So moved.
Moved, move made by Carla? Moved, moved may be made by Carla? Moved, move made by Carla? the individuals who have made a contribution to our country, many of those African-Americans
Second. Second. Second.
Second of by Andy Garcia. All those who favor signify by saying aye. Second of by Andy Garcia. All those who favor signify by saying aye. Second of by Andy Garcia. All those who favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
that contributed very much. So, in honor of Black History Month, City of Rialto would
Aye. Aye.
Motion carries. Thank you very much. At this time, we'll have the presentations Motion carries. Thank you very much. At this time, we'll have the presentations Motion carries. Thank you very much. At this time, we'll have the presentations like to make sure that we honor each and every one that has made a contribution in and proclamations, but before we call in on our Parks Recreation Director, I just and proclamations, but before we call in on our Parks Recreation Director, I just and proclamations, but before we call in on our Parks Recreation Director, I just wanted the past, and currently, we're celebrating Black History Month. With that, one other wanted to say that I'm wearing this tie in honor of Black History Month. We must remember wanted to say that I'm wearing this tie in honor of Black History Month. We must remember to say that I'm wearing this tie in honor of Black History Month. We must remember comment I'd like to make in reference to the outages that we had had at Los Colinas that this whole month, we're celebrating Black History Month, remembering many of that this whole month, we're celebrating Black History Month, remembering many of that this whole month, we're celebrating Black History Month, remembering many of community, and P.S., P.S., we were informed by Edison Company that they have moved the the individuals who have made a contribution to our country, many of those African-Americans the individuals who have made a contribution to our country, many of those African-Americans the individuals who have made a contribution to our country, many of those African-Americans that contributed very much. So, in honor of Black History Month, City of Rialto would that contributed very much. So, in honor of Black History Month, City of Rialto would that contributed very much. So, in honor of Black History Month, City of Rialto would outage, so they were, they will no longer have the outages because it's been moved to Fair Lane Cit- Cit- Citrix, yeah. So, it's now moved somewhere else. So, this way, like to make sure that we honor each and every one that has made a contribution in like to make sure that we honor each and every one that has made a contribution in like to make sure that we honor each and every one that has made a contribution in the past, and currently, we're celebrating Black History Month. With that, one other the past, and currently, we're celebrating Black History Month. With that, one other the past, and currently, we're celebrating Black History Month. With that, one other the people that live in Los Colinas will not be facing the outages that they've had comment I'd like to make in reference to the outages that we had had at Los Colinas comment I'd like to make in reference to the outages that we had had at Los Colinas comment I'd like to make in reference to the outages that we had had at Los Colinas in the past because of the winds that have been in that area. So, with that, that concludes community, and P.S., P.S., we were informed by Edison Company that they have moved the community, and P.S., P.S., we were informed by Edison Company that they have moved the community, and P.S., P.S., we were informed by Edison Company that they have moved the my report. At this time, I'd like to call on Cynthia, our Parks Recreation Director, to start off with our recognition. outage, so there were, they will no longer have the outages because it's been moved outage, so they were, they will no longer have the outages because it's been moved outage, so there were, they will no longer have the outages because it's been moved
Good evening, Mayor Mayor Potem and members of the council and esteemed guests.
to Fair Lane Cit- Cit- Citrix, yeah. So, it's now moved somewhere else. So, this way, to Fair Lane Cit- Cit- Citrix, yeah. So, it's now moved somewhere else. So, this way, to Fair Lane Cit- Cit- Citrix, yeah. So, it's now moved somewhere else. So, this way,
Tonight, I'm honored to stand before you to celebrate a historic achievement for our city. Our Division Two Volleyball All-Star Team has made Rialto proud by dominating the
the people that live in Los Colinas will not be facing the outages that they've had the people that live in Los Colinas will not be facing the outages that they've had the people that live in Los Colinas will not be facing the outages that they've had
SMAF volleyball tournament at Veterans Park at Carson and bringing home the first place
in the past because of the winds that have been in that area. So, with that, that concludes in the past because of the winds that have been in that area. So, with that, that concludes
championship. This tournament was coed with teams made up of both boys and girls, but
my report. At this time, I'd like to call on Cynthia, our Parks Recreation Director, my report. At this time, I'd like to call on Cynthia, our Parks Recreation Director,
our girls team, our all-girls team, won the, they won the tournament, so they brought
to start off with our recognition. to start off with our recognition.
Good evening, Mayor Mayor Potem and members of the council and esteemed guests.
Good evening, Mayor Mayor Potem and members of the council and esteemed guests.
home the championship. They played teams from Lomita, Azusa, Pasadena, and Burbank
Tonight, I'm honored to stand before you to celebrate a historic achievement for our
Tonight, I'm honored to stand before you to celebrate a historic achievement for our city. Our Division Two Volleyball All-Star Team has made Rialto proud by dominating
city. Our Division Two Volleyball All-Star Team has made Rialto proud by dominating
and emerged the champions. With an unwavering determination, teamwork, and skill, they
the SMAF volleyball tournament at Veterans Park at Carson and bringing home the first
the SMAF volleyball tournament at Veterans Park at Carson and bringing home the first
proved their strength, heart, and talent to know no boundaries. What makes this victory
place championship. This tournament was coed with teams made up of both boys and girls,
place championship. This tournament was coed with teams made up of both boys and girls,
even more special is that each of these talented players was handpicked from our Rialto girls volleyball program. They didn't just compete. They represented our city with
but our girls team, our all-girls team, won the, they won the tournament, so they
but our girls team, our all-girls team, won the, they won the tournament, so they
resilience, passion, and an unstoppable drive to win. I want to also shout out the coaches
brought home the championship. They played teams from Lomita, Azusa, Pasadena, and Burbank
brought home the championship. They played teams from Lomita, Azusa, Pasadena, and Burbank
and families who invested the energy into preparing these ladies for success. So, if
and emerged the champions. With an unwavering determination, teamwork, and skill, they
and emerged the champions. With an unwavering determination, teamwork, and skill, they
you'll join me giving them a round of applause.[1038.01][1038.01](APPLAUSE) So, let me introduce you to some of our staff. Ed, if you'll come up here,
proved their strength, heart, and talent to know no boundaries. What makes this victory
proved their strength, heart, and talent to know no boundaries. What makes this victory even more special is that each of these talented players was handpicked from our
even more special is that each of these talented players was handpicked from our Rialto girls'
Rialto girls volleyball program. They didn't just compete. They represented our city with
volleyball program. They didn't just compete. They represented our city with resilience,
resilience, passion, and an unstoppable drive to win. I want to also shout out the coaches
passion, and an unstoppable drive to win. I want to also shout out the coaches and
and families who invested the energy into preparing these ladies for success. So, if
families who invested the energy into preparing these ladies for success. So, if you'll join
you'll join me giving them a round of applause.[1067.64][1067.64](APPLAUSE)
me giving them a round of applause.[1067.64][1067.64](APPLAUSE) So, let me introduce you to some of our staff. Ed, if you'll come up here, he was
So, let me introduce you to some of our staff. Ed, if you'll come up here, he was
he was one of the coaches, along with, was it Kaylee? Along with Kaylee, who assisted,
one of the coaches, along with, was it Kaylee? Along with Kaylee, who assisted, was assistant
one of the coaches, along with, was it Kaylee? Along with Kaylee, who assisted, was assistant
was assistant coach with him. So, tonight's, tonight's even more special because on top
coach with him. So, tonight's, tonight's even more special because on top of the certificates
coach with him. So, tonight's, tonight's even more special because on top of the certificates
of the certificates that the girls are going to get from council, they're also going to
that the girls are going to get from council, they're also going to receive their gold
that the girls are going to get from council, they're also going to receive their gold
receive their gold medals from the tournament. So, if you want to give me those?
medals from the tournament. So, if you want to give me those?
medals from the tournament. So, if you want to give me those?
Before you do, I happen to know one of the coaches. She's related to me. Before you do, I happen to know one of the coaches. She's related to me. Before you do, I happen to know one of the coaches. She's related to me.
I heard.
I heard.
I heard.
Kaylee De La Cruz. Kaylee De La Cruz. Kaylee De La Cruz.
I heard. I would also like to introduce to you Raylen Frost. She is the programmer
I heard. I would also like to introduce to you Raylen Frost. She is the programmer
I heard. I would also like to introduce to you Raylen Frost. She is the programmer
over the entire youth sports division. If you'll stand up.[1122.21][1122.21](APPLAUSE)
over the entire youth sports division. If you'll stand up.[1122.21][1122.21](APPLAUSE)
over the entire youth sports division. If you'll stand up.[1122.22][1122.22](APPLAUSE) All right, and if I can have all of our volleyball girls come up to the
All right, and if I can have all of our volleyball girls come up to the front, please?[1129.21][1129.21](LAUGHTER)
All right, and if I can have all of our volleyball girls come up to the front, please?[1129.21][1129.21](LAUGHTER)
front, please?[1129.71][1129.71](LAUGHTER)
Come up.[1131.21][1131.21](APPLAUSE)
Ed, if you want to introduce the girls?
Ed, if you want to introduce the girls?
Ed, if you want to introduce the girls?
All right.
Yes, sure.
All right, first one. Do I sound good? Okay. Ava, Ava Angulo?[1149.14][1149.14](APPLAUSE)
You've got to come to the mic, buddy.
You've got to come to the mic, buddy.
All right, first one. Wes Angulo, okay. Ava, Ava Angulo?[1149.14][1149.14](APPLAUSE)
All right, first one. Wes Angulo, okay. Ava, Ava Angulo?[1149.14][1149.14](APPLAUSE)
All right, next up, Sofia Camarena.[1159.14][1159.14](APPLAUSE)
All right, next up, Sofia Camarena.[1159.14][1159.14](APPLAUSE)
All right, next up, Sofia Camarena.[1159.14][1159.14](APPLAUSE)
Sinai Castaneda.[1165.14][1165.14](APPLAUSE)
Good job, Sofia.
Good job, Sofia.
Ryan Morales.[1171.14][1171.14](APPLAUSE)
Sinai Castaneda.[1172.14][1172.14](APPLAUSE)
Sinai Castaneda.[1172.14][1172.14](APPLAUSE)
Melanie Mejia.[1177.14][1177.14](APPLAUSE)
Ryan Morales.[1178.14][1178.14](APPLAUSE)
Ryan Morales.[1178.14][1178.14](APPLAUSE)
Camila Garcia.[1183.14][1183.14](APPLAUSE)
Melanie Mejia.[1184.14][1184.14](APPLAUSE)
Melanie Mejia.[1184.14][1184.14](APPLAUSE)
Genesis Garabe.[1189.14][1189.14](APPLAUSE)
Camila Garcia.[1190.14][1190.14](APPLAUSE)
Camila Garcia.[1190.14][1190.14](APPLAUSE)
Janelle Gatman.[1195.14][1195.14](APPLAUSE)
Genesis Garabe.
Genesis Garabe.
Good job, Genesis.
Good job, Genesis.
Isabella Silva.[1201.14][1201.14](APPLAUSE)
Janelle Gatman.[1202.14][1202.14](APPLAUSE)
Janelle Gatman.[1202.14][1202.14](APPLAUSE)
Ellie De La Cruz.[1207.14][1207.14](APPLAUSE)
Isabella Silva.[1208.14][1208.14](APPLAUSE)
Isabella Silva.[1208.14][1208.14](APPLAUSE)
Delilah Mata.[1213.14][1213.14](APPLAUSE)
Ellie De La Cruz.[1214.14][1214.14](APPLAUSE)
Ellie De La Cruz.[1214.14][1214.14](APPLAUSE)
And Cadence Beck.[1221.14][1221.14](APPLAUSE)
Delilah Mata.[1220.14][1220.14](APPLAUSE)
Delilah Mata.[1220.14][1220.14](APPLAUSE)
Good job, Delilah.
And Cadence Beck.[1226.14][1226.14](APPLAUSE)
All right, and that is your 2024 SMAF volleyball champions.[1233.01][1233.01](APPLAUSE)
And Cadence Beck.[1230.14][1230.14](APPLAUSE)
All right, and that is your 2024 SMAF volleyball champions.[1234.14][1234.14](APPLAUSE)
All right, and that is your 2024 SMAF volleyball champions.[1242.14][1242.14](APPLAUSE)
Thank you very, thank you very much, and congratulations to the girls and their Thank you very, thank you very much, and congratulations to the girls and their Thank you very, thank you very much, and congratulations to the girls and their championship. If we can have all the members stand up behind, so this way they can also, you can take our photos with all of the girls here, because all of us would like to congratulate championship. If we can have all the members stand up behind, so this way they can also, them as well instead of standing in front of you.[1263.21][1263.21](LAUGHTER) Thank you. Congratulations once again.[1265.21][1265.21](APPLAUSE) And to my little grand, great-granddaughter, Ellie De La Cruz.[1273.14][1273.14](LAUGHTER) you can take our photos with all of the girls here, because all of us would like to congratulate championship. If we can have all the members stand up behind, so this way they can also, them as well instead of standing in front of you.[1273.21][1273.21](LAUGHTER) She's my great-granddaughter. Thank you. Congratulations once again.[1275.21][1275.21](APPLAUSE)
Oh, she is?
Yeah. And to my little grand, great-granddaughter, Ellie De La Cruz.[1283.14][1283.14](LAUGHTER) you can take our photos with all of the girls here, because all of us would like The next presentation we have is an update on our police station. Chief Mark Kling? to congratulate them as well instead of standing in front of you.[1283.14][1283.14](LAUGHTER) Thank you. Congratulations once again.[1293.33][1293.33](APPLAUSE) She's my great-granddaughter. Yeah. The next presentation we have is an update on our police station. Chief Mark Kling? And to my little grand, great-granddaughter, Ellie De La Cruz.[1302.14][1302.14](LAUGHTER) She's my great-granddaughter. Yeah. The next presentation we have is an update on our police station. Chief Mark Kling?
Honorable Mayor, Mayor Potem and Council, I'll have Gabe put this up and as just an
Honorable Mayor, Mayor Potem and Council, I'll have Gabe put this up and as just an
update, try to give it to more of a visual effect on what's happening with the new police
update, try to give it to more of a visual effect on what's happening with the new police
update, try to give it to more of a visual effect on what's happening with the new police
station. And it's actually really nice to see people in the audience that may not actually
station. And it's actually really nice to see people in the audience that may not actually
station. And it's actually really nice to see people in the audience that may not actually
see what's happening across the street and also those people at home. So, Gabe, if I
see what's happening across the street and also those people at home. So, Gabe, if I
see what's happening across the street and also those people at home. So, Gabe, if I and also those people at home. So, Gabe, if I can get you to key this up, please. So, uh, members of the audience, can you please, uh, join me in giving the city council a big hand for what they've done for us here. Rialto, thank you. Yeah, this could, building couldn't, uh, come at a moment sooner. Uh, right now, we're dealing with a major sewage issue across the street, um, and it wasn't for Public Works. Um, I don't even know what we would do, but, you know, half of our building right now has got a lot of problems. Um, so that, that new building happens really good. That, what you witnessed is that white beam is what's called the topping off. Uh, and there was over a hundred, uh, employees citywide, uh, that joined in on that, not just police employees, along with the council, the mayor, and, um, some members of the, of the community. That, that beam, as you can see where it was placed, will always be a part of that building for probably the next sixty years plus. So, uh, the next few, uh, weeks ahead, they'll finish the roof, uh, they'll actually start pouring concrete on the second floor. For those members of the audience, that outbuilding, the one to the left of the main police station, is seventeen thousand square feet. So you can understand the size of the new police station. Um, our building right now that has over two hundred employees in it is fifteen thousand square feet. So, um, the new building itself, or that new range, is two thousand square feet, feet bigger than our main police station. So, uh, there's a lot of things happening in the next, uh, next month when I come back, but I think visually it's, it, it's really coming along. And again, I thank you for, uh, all the support and everything that you've done for us.
Thank you, uh, Jay Klein. A couple of questions that I'd like to ask. One is, um, whose office is that beam gonna be over?
Yeah, that's a remembrance. That, uh, portion of the building is actually the jail, sir. So every prisoner will be able to look there and see what's going on. No, it's, um, yeah, it's not visible from the ceiling. Well, no, I love Rialto's in there, so.
Uh, one of the questions that I'm asked, and I'm sure many of the other council members are asked, is the, the completion date. Maybe you can, you know, let us know when it's gonna be completed, because I'm constantly being asked, uh, when is that police station gonna be done? I says, "Well, it's a state of the art with a lot of new technology, with real crime and everything else that can be inside the police station." It'll be there. It'll be good to, to know that Rialto is on the verge of becoming the state of the art, uh, police station. So, if you could let us know the date.
Yeah, that is, uh, that is true. And again, with the, with the council's help and, and the vision that we've got is, uh, it will be state of the art. It'll be only one of two police stations in this whole entire region that's being constructed right now. And, um, we're hoping by the end of two, uh, yeah, by the end of this year, we'll actually have to move into the new building, even though there won't be an official ribbon cutting until the summer of twenty-six, because after we move in, then they'll demolish the existing building that we're in right now. So, the summer of twenty-six, and by the end of this year, we should actually occupy that new building.
Thank you very much.
Thank you so much. Appreciate you.
With that, then we'll go into oral communications. Uh, clerk?
We have Kimberly Gates. Is Kimberly Gates here? What's her name? No? Okay, we have, uh, Trishae Finney. Yes, you can come to the microphone.
Good evening. My name is Trishae Finney, and I'm a longtime resident of Citrus Grove. I've lived in my apartment for the past eleven years, and I'm here today to discuss why a renovation of the apartments would be beneficial not only for my family, but also for the surrounding community. First, I want to express how much I appreciate the community we have here. Over the years, my family and, over the years, over the years, my family and I have seen the neighborhood grow and evolve, and we've witnessed the resilience and the spirit of our neighbors. However, like many long-term, long-term residents, our apartment has started to show signs of wear and tear. And the space is no longer as functional or comfortable as it once was. A renovation would allow us to maintain our home in a way that meets our growing needs and ensure that our family continues to thrive. From an environmental perspective, renovating an existing apartment is far more sustainable choice than moving to a new space. It reduces the carbon, um, footprint associated with the new construction, preserves the character of our neighborhood, and utilizes the infrastructure that already exists, saving on resources. The work done will be in line with, um, modern sustainability standards, using energy-efficient materials and reducing waste. On a personal level, a renovated space would help us improve our quality of life. We're a growing family, and as such, we need more functional space. Renovating would also allow us, will also allow us to better use the square footage we have, creating a safer, healthier environment for our children to grow up in. From updated kitchens to better installations and ventilations, the improvements would make our home more comfortable and energy efficient, leading to lower utility bills and a healthier living space. But this renovation is not just about improving our family's living conditions, it's about enhancing the community as a whole. When long-term residents are able to stay in their home and invest in them, it fosters the, the stability and encourages a stronger sense of community. Renovated apartments contribute to the overall upkeep of the neighborhood. They set a standard for other residents, encouraging the property to maintain and improve the quality of living for everyone in the building and surrounding areas. Ultimately, this, this renovation represents an investment in both our home and our neighborhood. It's about ensuring that the people who have lived here for years and wish to continue doing so are able to adapt their living spaces to meet their evolving needs, while also helping to make the entire community more vibrant, sustainable, and supportive. Thank you for considering, um, this project, and, yeah, thank you.
That is all we have for oral communication. Mayor and council, the other two, uh, speakers are for the, um, remaining tabs that we have.
Okay, seeing that there's no other oral communications, we will now move on to the, uh, consent items. Do I hear a motion from anyone on the council that would like to either pull an item or make a motion to accept the consent items?
Move for approval.
Motion been made by Carla Perez.
Second.
Seconded by Ed Scott. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries. We'll move on to the tab number one.
Thank you, Mayor. Uh, for this presentation, I would like to call up, um, Katie Crowell. Thank you.
Good evening, Mayor. Mayor Pro Tem and members of the city council. This evening, I am requesting that the city council conduct a public hearing regarding the proposed annexation of territory into Rialto Landscape and Lighting District Number Two. The city conditioned several development projects to construct Parkway and/or median landscaping and to install city streetlights. Annexation into L L M D two is a condition of the city's acceptance of any publicly maintained landscaping and street lighting. Our first map on the presentation on the screen there is north of Foothill Annexations. And this represents all annexations south of Foothill. This evening, we have two developments that are, um, hopefully being annexed. They are non-residential annexations. Our first is P P D two thousand twenty-one dash zero zero five five. This is a development, um, of five point oh one acres, located north of West Lowell Street and west of North Locust Avenue. Our second non-residential annexation is P P D two thousand twenty-two dash zero 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 one. This is a development on thirteen point five eight acres, located north of West Rialto Avenue and east of North Lilac Avenue. This is a protest ballot proceeding for the proposed levy of new assessments as described in your engineer's report included as attachment one. On January the fourteenth, two thousand twenty-five, city council adopted resolution eight-three-one-three, setting a public hearing to consider the annexation into Rialto Landscape and Lighting District Number Two for this evening, February eleventh, two thousand twenty-five. Subsequently, the city mailed public notices and official ballots to the property owners on record. At this time, I would request that the city council conduct the public hearing and take any public testimony regarding those proposed annexations and tabulate the ballots received. Adopt resolution eight-three-one-eight, declaring the results of the property owner protest ballot proceedings, and adopt resolution eight-three-one-nine, confirming the engineer's report regarding the annexation of properties into the Landscape and Lighting District Maintenance District Number Two, and levy of annual assessments and order the levy of a collection of assessments. This concludes my report, and Webb and myself are here if you have any questions.
Are there any questions by member of the councils in reference to the public hearing? I open the public hearing? Is anybody from the audience wishing to speak on it?
No.
Open it up to members of the council.
Move to close the public hearing.
Motion's been made and seconded by, motion by Ed Scott, seconded by Andy Canisettis. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries. And then, uh, on the resolutions that just passed, that's resolution number eighty-three eighteen and resolution number, uh, eighty-three nineteen.
Yes, I have ballots to open, so, down, down to the public hearing is closed, I'm gonna open the ballots for, um, those landscape districts. So I have first ballot that I'm going to proceed to open is for, um, L M D two, P P D twenty-twenty-two dash zero zero one. Uh, this is in support, which is, uh, P P D twenty-twenty-one zero, I'm sorry, P P D twenty-twenty-two dash zero 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 one. That's the first one that is in support. See, it turned out I need to read the A P N number, do I? Or should I read the, the A P N numbers?
You don't need to read the A P N number, you just need to read the P P D number.
Thank you. Second ballot that we are attempting to open is P P D twenty-twenty-one dash zero zero five five. And that is also in support. And that concludes the opening of the ballots.
Mr. Mayor, move approval of resolution eighty-three-one-eight and resolution eighty-three-one-nine.
Motion's been made by council member Ed Scott, seconded by Carla Perez. Any other correspondents? Any otherbody wish to speak on it? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Thank you. Now we'll move on to tab two.
Yes, thank you, Mayor. Mayor Pro Tem, Council, Paul Gonzalez, Community Development Manager here to introduce the item. Good evening, Mayor. Mayor Pro Tem, members of the city council, I'm Paul Gonzalez, Community Development Manager. Before you tonight is the anticipated Foothill Central specific plan. The Foothill Central specific plan incorporates both our existing Foothill plan, which runs along Foothill Boulevard throughout our whole city, and the central plan, also known as a downtown plan, which runs from Foothill down to Merrill Avenue. Staff and our consultant, W S P, have been working on the plan for the last two and a half years, with the goal of updating the plan to make it a more modern plan and to incorporate more residential uses and mixed-use projects that would support our existing commercial uses along Foothill and, and downtown.
Mayor, uh, after looking at the documents here, I wanna abstain, uh, from this, uh, due to, uh, my business on one-nineteen East Foothill Boulevard, so I'll be abstaining and will not be participating.
Thank you very much, uh. Member, uh, Canisettis will be abstaining from voting on this item since it's close to his business, so.
So, for the past two and a half years, staff has had over a dozen meetings with the community and attended a lot of the city-sponsored events to gain comments from the citizens, residents of Rialto. We've had multiple city council meetings where we presented the project, planning commission, and received comments from the economic development committee as well. Uh, we were sure to incorporate a lot of the great comments we heard into the updated plan. In crafting the document, staff was careful to preserve all existing uses that were out there, as well as add additional mixed-use and opportunities for residential as well. Uh, we also heard, um, create more of a Route sixty-six theme, so there's nice, um, illustrations in the plan that show opportunities for, um, commercial businesses and residential communities to add our Route sixty-six logo throughout our city on Foothill Boulevard. So with that introduction, I'm gonna go ahead and bring in David Solz, who's with W S P, uh, to give a, a presentation.
Good evening, Mayor. Mayor Pro Tem, council members. Uh, thank you for giving me the opportunity to present the Foothill Central Specific Plan update. As Paul mentioned, my name is David Solz. I am a urban planner with W S P. And I just have a few slides to provide some background on the plan update and the process for developing it. So, to begin with, a specific plan is a plan with special, special standards for a focused area within the city. And it's always consistent with the city's general plan. This update combines two existing specific plans with the common goals of increasing housing and commercial opportunities along main corridors in the city. Here we have, uh, the plan area and its Foothill Boulevard from Maple to Pepper Ave, and then downtown, downtown, down to Merrill Avenue. And this update was based on a vision statement that was developed in early twenty-twenty-two, near the beginning of the project. This is the project's timeline. So, as Paul mentioned, the project started about three years ago, February twenty-twenty-two, uh, and it included public engagement throughout the process. And, uh, here's some images of some of the outreach early in that public engagement where we, uh, where it, this helped us, uh, gather input from the community. We had a, a number of, uh, workshops, meetings, pop-ups throughout the city. And some, some specific highlights from the plan. Like Paul mentioned, it preserves existing land uses, it encourages higher density downtown, and it includes some design concepts for strengthening the identity of Foothill Boulevard as, as the historic Route sixty-six. The plan also simplifies the zoning while preserving existing uses, and this is the current zoning map. And this is the proposed map per the plan. These are some examples of the, uh, the densities that were improved in the city's latest housing plan, and that are also included in this specific plan. And this is a, this is a rendering of a active project, uh, that would fit within the proposed plan. So it's, it's located, the proposed proj, project is located on Foothill Boulevard. Has eighty-one, um, condo units, two-story condo units. And so this just gives you an idea of what the type of, type of projects that, uh, would fit within this specific plan update. And finally, some sketches of, uh, proposed streetscape improvements on Riverside Avenue, on Foothill Boulevard that would in, improve safety and comfort, and also, um, place-making and, and wayfinding opportunities in the city. And, uh, I'll open it up for questions now, and I'd also like to say, I've, it, it's been my pleasure to be working with the city's staff and the residents and the community over the past few years on this plan. I, I think it's a, it's real a solid plan, and it's, it's been great to get to know Rialto. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any members of the council that would like to ask any questions?
Mr. Mayor, this is a public hearing. Now would be the time for any member of the community to speak on this item.
Thank you very much. Are there any members from the city that would like to speak on this?
I just need to indicate for the record, um, you did receive a letter, uh, and I've given that to all the council former Warrenton residents. Uh, it was submitted in. It was, it was also submitted in to the Director of Community Development, as well as to me to give to the mayor and the city council.
Yeah, and it was in reference to support of this, correct?
Yes, the letter that you have is, is in support of the project, yes.
Okay, thank you. Uh, any other comments from, uh, members of the public?
Move to close the public hearing.
Motion's been made by Ed Scott to close the public session, seconded by Carla Perez. Okay, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any oppositions? Uh, let it be known that, uh, council member Andy Canisettis resented from voting on this item. Thank you, and, uh, we appreciate this because this is, it gives us an opportunity to revitalize downtown, and at the same time, looking at the beautification of the downtown, and then allowing for housing and condos in that area, so it's moving the city in the right direction, so thank you very much.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, comments? Comments?
Any comments?
Yes. I just wanna commend staff for doing a good job on this. Um, I know it's been a rocky road and it's taken us a while to get there, but I'm very pleased to see that we've taken all of Foothill and made it a mixed-use area, um, because that was a little confusing when we first came out with the plan, so, good job, and, uh, hopefully some new projects will come along for the city that will certainly enhance, uh, Foothill Boulevard and our downtown area. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Any other comments, uh, Carla?
Move to approve resolution number eight-three-two-zero and resolution eight-three-two-one.
Second.
Motion's been made by Carla Perez, seconded by, um, member Ed Scott. Any, uh, discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposition? Hearing none, motion carries. Thank you. Next item on the agenda is, uh, tab three.
Yes, thank you, Mayor, Mayor Protem and Council, Colby Cataldi, Director of Community Development. The item for you today is the National Core Citrus Grove renovation project, which consists of a hundred and affordable units, a hundred and fifty affordable housing units to be renovated at approximately seventy thousand dollars per unit. The total project cost is somewhere near fifteen, sixteen million dollars. The city, county, and state all currently have loans on this property to date. They are all working together, each entity's working together with the National Core to restructure those loans. And, you know, that restructuring will enable the National Core to secure sixty million dollars in state tax credits and taxes that bond financing to perform those renovations as proposed to all those hundred and fifty units. There's also a federal home loan on there that is being, in the amount of about a million dollars, that is being forgiven there to help with the assistance of the financing of the project and the proposed improvements. The Citrus Grove renovation project includes a number of different benefits to it. One is the preservation of a hundred and fifty quality affordable housing units for a period of fifty-five years. That is reserved via covenant. Today, we're twenty years into a fifty-five-year period, which of course leaves thirty-five years on the current deal today. This does extend that out to another fifty-five years, and that ensures that Rialto residents have access to affordable housing. Additionally, there's a half a million dollar payment by the National Core to the city of Rialto, which would be unrestricted and captured into as general fund revenue. This is something that, as the council desires, could be reinvested back into the community for various public needs. The current loan and the proposed loan modification is a residual receipts loan. Currently, today, over the last ten years, the Rialto Housing Authority has, I think, earned, just short of thirty thousand dollars on that loan. This new modified loan will increase that revenue, and it'll enable a greater opportunity for the city to reinvest those proceeds into future housing improvement projects and programs. Of those hundred and fifty units, we are securing that seventy-five units are, will be designated very low income and seventy-five units at low income, which definitely helps the city meet its compliance obligations for our housing element. There's also a factor in the interest rate, which does benefit the city. The current rate is at three percent. The new rate in the loan would be four point eight percent, so there's added value there. And there's a updated projections on the pro forma of this project provided by the National Core, and it does project in the next, in the coming ten years, that there would be a revenue of a little over two hundred thousand dollars more than what today's current loan would provide the city. So with those benefits and, you know, the value of receiving new improvements to a hundred and fifty-unit apartment complex, and then the monetary benefits that the city does receive that then in the future can be utilized for various public programs at your, with your leadership and direction. That is basically the entirety of the project. The National Core is here to answer any and all questions that you have about their project, about their financing, how they propose to deliver the project, their timeframes. Also, we have Bond Counsel here that specializes in these types of transactions that can answer certainly any of your questions at whatever detail is necessary. So, thank you very much.
Thank you. Are there anyone from the audience that is willing to speak on this item?
Yes, we have two speakers. We have, first one, Jason Neal.
Jason Neal?
All right, good evening, Honorable Mayor, Mayor Protem, City Council. As Colby had mentioned, National Core revitalized Citrus Grove about seventeen years ago, so we're just trying to return the property back to the condition it was. Unfortunately, since some time has passed since we have renovated this property, we have a few repairs that are needed that are very critical. Some of these repairs are structural in nature, and we want to make sure that we bring this property back to the condition it was. Happy to answer any questions that you may have. We did look at all our available options in order to move this project forward. Unfortunately, the existing RDA debt that's on this property exceeds the fair market value, and we've been advised this is our only option to move forward. So, once again, thank you and happy to answer any questions you may have.
Are there any members that would like to ask any questions?
We have one more speaker. I, Sulema Hernandez.
Good evening. My name is Sulema Hernandez, and I have been a resident at Citrus Grove Apartments for about five years, and I'm a mother to a child with disabilities. I am here today to speak to you about how important it is and how much of an impact improving the renovation, approving the renovation project for National Core Apartments would be, not only for my child and I, but also for the community. As a full-time caregiver for my son with disabilities, we face so many daily challenges on a daily. It could be something simple, like getting my son to the bathroom to brush his teeth, using the restroom, or taking a bath, or pushing his wheelchair around from room to room. All in which, it would be so helpful and beneficial if we had an ADA compliant unit. Approving the National Core renovation project would not only be beneficial to those with disabilities, but enhances the experience for better living for all the residents. Imagine being a child, a loved one, or a person with disabilities. Having access to an ADA compliant unit would mean the world. It would mean a chance for a better today and a better tomorrow. It would mean having more freedom and space and the ability to learn more life skills for them. It will mean finally having a home that is specifically designed for those with special needs or disabilities and being able to plant the seed of hope for a better life. I thank you for your time tonight, and that's all. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any other members from the audience that wants to speak on this?
No, that was it.
Hearing none. I'll ask for members of the council if they have any questions. Councilmember Ed Scott?
Yeah, just a couple of questions. Colby, we're not actually approving this project tonight. We're simply voting on whether or not we're agreeing to the loan modification terms and forgiving roughly fourteen million dollars. Is that not correct?
That is correct, sir.
Okay. My question is, how many projects, similar projects like this do we have in the city?
That's a, that is an excellent question. There's a number. Jeez. I know that National Core owns, I think, three properties within the city. I don't know the condition of those properties or the financing, the state of their financing or terms of those properties. There's the most, the biggest property that we've been involved with is, has been the Julia Palms property. That is an older property, which we don't have the same relationship anymore today.
But that's not a National Core project?
No, it's not. No, it's not, sir.
Okay, so have we forgiven loans on other projects?
Not to my knowledge.
And this, the first, so if we do not forgive this loan, can you tell us and the community what the outcome of that would be?
If we don't forgive the fourteen, fourteen, there's currently approximately twenty-one, twenty-two million dollars in principal and interest in the current loan right now. The fourteen million dollar request to be forgiven is because of the appraised value at twenty-six million and the debt that is levied on the property at forty million approximately. So that's the delta and why they're asking today for fourteen million dollars to be relieved. If we don't pursue this, we are told, are informed by the National Core that they are at jeopardy of losing the sixteen million dollars of the tax credits and the taxes that bond financing that they've secured through the state. So that will go away, which is critical to actually effectuating the improvements. So that would put the property and the core in a position to where they would not be updating and upgrading those improvements throughout the entire complex. That goes with ADA improvements for accessibility, appliances. You know, it could be a leaky roof, there's porches, there's balconies that are at risk, structurally at risk, and things of that nature. The risk to the city is that the property could further go into disrepair and then could potentially be an asset that deteriorates to a degree where it's incredibly expensive to recover from and/or a potential default could be made. If a potential default ever were to occur, there are other entities in a stronger position than the city to take over that asset, to which the city would, you know, likely not recover any money at that point.
And that would include the other eight million dollars that were owed on this loan? So a total of twenty-two million dollars, correct?
Yes, sir.
And does this project pay any fees as a result of these modifications to the buildings?
Fees as in building permit fees?
Correct, or any other fees?
They actually have their building permits in with our department right now at this time. They have fully engineered plans, they have gone through plan checks, and they will be paying all the permit fees that that are subject to city fee.
Do you recall what the value is of that project? Of the construction, proposed construction?
Yeah, the proposed construction is, the Core can answer maybe better than I. It's somewhere between twelve and sixteen million. I know that their financing is sixteen million. So at seventy thousand dollars per unit times a hundred and fifty is near eleven.
Okay, and Rialto is the only, Rialto Federal Home Loan Bank is being asked to forgive a million dollars? And Rialto's being asked to forgive fourteen million?
That is, that is correct, sir.
And California HCD and the County of San Bernardino are not being asked to forgive anything. Is that not correct?
That is correct. They are restructuring their loan to take their current principal and the accrued interest and put that together, repackage into a current loan.
Okay, and is it common in the state of California for these low-income projects to be asked, for cities to be asked to forgive money?
It is. The affordable housing projects are not ones that are typically known to produce, you know, any great revenue for a municipality. I think the last project, last city was the city of La Quinta that forgave a loan, I think, in the twenty million, you know, range. I don't know all the details about that, but that was one of the more recent ones.
Okay, and do you know if this project is currently fully occupied?
I think they're in the ninetieth plus percentile of their occupancy, if they're not fully occupied.
Okay, thank you.
Are there any other questions by a member of the council?
I have a question. How many affordable housings do we have in the city of Rialto?
That's a great, a great question. I am happy to bring back a report for you, Mayor and Council, that can identify all of the affordable housing complexes in the city. The most recent one that was constructed was right there at MetroLink on the south side with fifty-five units. That's also the newest National Core project. But we do have other properties like Julia Palms that has a hundred-plus affordable units in that complex. But I certainly can bring back a full report on all of them.
I think there's seven.
Yeah, could be.
And of those affordable housing, how many of them have childcare and accessibility to disability children?
This one certainly does, and it has a successful program that I've been made aware of. I don't know about the other facilities, if they have county-sponsored type of daycare programs, first five or anything like that, but I certainly can do that research and provide that information back to you as well.
Okay, thank you. No, because that's a great asset when we can provide, through National Core, that we can provide not only the occupancy who occupy the place, but an ability to provide disability for a lot of our children, and then a daycare center that some of these other affordable housing in the city of Rialto don't provide. And I think that we could use this possibly as a model in terms of the future of what we've done here, and then looking at additional affordable housing that may be coming into the area and being in compliance. And I understand that it's a loan modification and a forgiveness from our part, but we have to look at the long range too as well, not just this short range there, where we could actually be losing a lot of money and then displacing many of the individuals, maybe that would look to move somewhere else. They would not be able to get this kind of service. So I'm inclined to support this loan modification, but I want to hear a motion from my council members. Anybody else have any questions?
Hearing none. I move approval. Seconded by Andy Cattaseta, it's moved by myself. Any further discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Roll call.
Roll call. We'll have a roll call. Aye.
Councilmember Carrie Salas?
Aye.
Councilmember Montoya?
Aye.
Councilmember Perez?
Aye.
Mayor Protem Scott?
Aye.
Motion carries. Congratulations. Next, we'll move on to tab number four.
Good evening, Honorable Mayor, Mayor Protem, and Council. Tonight on tab four is a consideration for a contract with Genesis Incorporated for the implementation of the Genesis Evacuation Management Platform. The city has recently developed and adopted contemporary emergency plans that include our Emergency Operations Plan and our Local Hazard Mitigation Plan. While these plans have greatly increased our emergency preparedness, we see certainly many opportunities for improvements in training, planning, and the evacuation notification process. The Genesis evacuation system is a state-of-the-art management and public notification platform that can improve emergency response capabilities through real-time zone-based management. Compared to some of our legacy processes, this system can reduce evacuation times by up to ninety percent, allowing responders and emergency management teams to coordinate evacuations more effectively and efficiently. The implementation of the Genesis evacuation program will provide the city with a significant upgrades and advancements in our emergency preparedness, particularly in the terms of wildfires, floods, and large-scale evacuations. The key benefits of the system include intelligent evacuation mapping zones, which enables real-time flexible adaptive evacuation planning that can be customized for different emergency scenarios like earthquake, flood, hazmat, et cetera. It has a rapid channel notification, which allows emergency officials to issue notifications through text, calls, emails, billboards, and all of our social media platforms that the city is already utilizing. The system also enhances our situational awareness by providing responders with real-time data and visualization tools and improving our response coordination and reducing decision time making. The system also allows for automated alerts and evacuation orders to further improve our response speed and reflex time by minimizing reliance on manual messaging systems. This contract can be secured through our NPP Sourcewell Cooperative Purchasing Agreement. As far as the operating budget, the Genesis contract is approximately twenty-seven thousand, seven hundred and thirty dollars per year for a three-year contract with additional two years on good performance. We do have grant funding available for this program. I do have a short video. If you'll indulge me, if Gabe, can you play up the video to give you an idea of what this program looks like?
Genesis evac, part of the Genesis Protect Platform, keeps people safe with real-time zone-based response planning and evacuation management. Reduce the time from incident recognition to public message readiness by ninety percent, from hours to minutes. In evac, intelligently created zones help make precise geographical targets for rapid decisions in a common operating picture. Build, edit, and act upon location data, including shelters, critical facilities, and traffic patterns. From wildfires to floods to active shooters, any geographically focused message, down to the size of stadium sections, can benefit from evac's zone-based planning. Simply go into evac, select the zones you want to target, and in just a couple of clicks, change the status of the zone to keep people informed. You can use evac for evacuations, shelter-in-place warnings, repopulation updates after danger has passed, or for any targeted communication of your choice. Evac integrates with Genesis Alert or other messaging solutions to send multi-channel communications to selected zones, to hyper-target messaging to people who need to know. Alert can send messages to SMS, Genesis acoustic speakers, email, digital displays, and more. And people can follow their zones to see current status using the Genesis Protect Citizen website or receive zone-based alerts on the Citizen mobile app.
So one thing I'd add with Genesis is they're already tied in with a lot of our solutions. They're tied in with our Tableta Command System, which fire departments use throughout the state of California. They're also tied state of California. They're also tied in with, uh, Nixol and other partnerships the city already has. Um, I think the, uh, the Watch Duty, uh, was the most downloaded app of the year so far with the fires we have in Southern California. They're also integrated with that solution as well. Um, I do have Andrew from Genesis here, if you have any questions, or council has any questions for me on the report.
Move for approval.
I have some questions. Comment? Second. Okay, a motion's been made by Carla Perez, seconded by Andy Cudicetis. At this time, we'll ask for questions. Uh, Councilmember Ed Scott? I, I appreciate you bringing this forward, and I certainly appreciate the fact that Rialto's one of the first cities in Southern California to implement this. However, being the person that asked the questions about evacuations and, um, fire hydrants, et cetera, et cetera, I had kind of hoped for a little more elaborate of a presentation that would have included comments from our water department, our public works, and others about what happens in this city if, in the event of emergency, whether it become an earthquake or a fire, like happened in L.A. And this is all as a result of the fires in L.A. So, I, I'd like to see something come back that gives a broader, um, message to our community to tell them what will happen in the event of an actual fire, because we clearly could be in a situation like they were in Los Angeles, um, whether it be an earthquake or an actual fire as a result of high winds. Um, and that includes our water resources and whether we're capable of putting out fires. So, um, again, I appreciate you doing this tonight, but, um, Madam City Manager, I would, uh, request that, uh, a little more intense conversation, down-to-earth conversation come back for the residents of this community, so that we can assure them that we are prepared for any emergency in this city, and that we can assure them that, uh, we will have water resources to deal with that. And I, you know, one of the issues that we just became aware of, for the council's knowledge, is that we do not have generators on our well facilities in the city. So, if our electricity was to be totally shut down, we wouldn't have water. And that's something that we clearly have to address, and we have to address it very quickly. So, again, I appreciate you bringing this forward. Thank you. Thank you. Uh, any other questions? No, I think it, it's good, and it's asking us to, to initiate a three-year term, and I believe that the people that can do that, you can come back in terms of presenting, uh, an outline plan of how we deal with the evacuations and emergency services that we need to provide to all of the citizens of the city of Rialto. So, this way, as we did before in, in reference to the outages that we had, uh, we had Tim Sullivan give a presentation in, in terms of, uh, uh, how do we deal with the outages that we have? How do we deal with the emergencies that we may have, whether it's an earthquake, uh, that may be coming through, just as the one that was in San Bernardino? Uh, was it yesterday? Yeah, about a three-point-five percent earthquake in San Bernardino, because we're right near the St. Andrews Fault. And I believe that Councilmember Ed Scott is very much correct in terms of wanting to make sure that we know exactly, uh, what to do, but also have the equipment, uh, that we need to deal with, uh, emergency too as well. So, we look forward to, uh, getting a presentation sometime in the future, uh, that we can say what direction do we need to go to make sure that the city of Rialto is well-prepared and making sure that our residents know exactly what to do. And with that, then, uh, motion's been made? Right?
Yes, we have a motion in a second.
Okay, all those in favor signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Aye? Motion carries. Thank you, sir. Uh, next item is, uh, one of the biggest items that we have on the agenda. Tab five.
Mayor, my pleasure to present this item. Uh, for your consideration tonight is adoption of Resolution eight-three-two-two, which would effectively appoint Tanya Williams as your city manager and improve, uh, her employment agreement. Uh, the city previously conducted a nationwide formal recruitment and selection process that generated twenty-nine applications for the position of city manager. There were fourteen qualified individuals. Uh, the council narrowed that down to seven, uh, candidates who they interviewed, and then there was a top three that you considered, and Tanya Williams was your top candidate. Uh, Tanya has extensive experience in, uh, public management. She's worked with, uh, cities of San Bernardino, Indian Wells, uh, cities in Portland. She's got a master's in public administration. Uh, she has worked with the city in management capacity since twenty-twenty-two, including serving as your, uh, assistant city manager and as acting city manager for just a few, a few days, moments, weeks, years, it seems like? If you move forward with this tonight, uh, Tanya will start as your city manager beginning tomorrow, February eleventh, twenty-twenty-five.
Move, I'm, I'll make the motion, seconded by Ed Scott.
Uh, and just one item, I have to say this, for, uh, legal reasons, the government code requires us to state the base salary of the position, which is three-hundred-and-fifty-nine-thousand-one-hundred-and-ninety-five dollars. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. With that, uh, I, I am going to take the privilege of making the motion to have Tanya, and then I'll have the second by Ed Scott, my mayor pro temp. Any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Aye.
We'll do a roll call. Since we're early.
No, no objection, but I would.
Of course, sir. Um, motion was made by, you said you, so start with you. Mayor Baca?
Aye.
Mayor Protam Scott?
Aye.
Councilmember Carisales?
Aye.
Councilmember Perez?
Aye.
Councilmember Martella, Montoya?
Aye.
Motion carries. Congratulations, Tanya. And I'd like to, would you like to say a few words?
Yes, um, thank you, Mayor, Mayor, and Mayor Protam and City Council. It's such an honor to serve as your next city manager. Uh, it's been a professional goal of mine to serve as city manager, and it's a, it's truly an honor for it to be Rialto. Um, I appreciate the confidence from the city council for me to serve in this role, and I look forward to working with all of you, uh, the community, as well as our dedicated staff, to continuing our great work here. Thank you.
Thank you. At this time, I'll open it up for any comments from members of the council, if they wish to make a comment. Councilmember Ed Scott? Congratulations, Tanya. You may have, uh, gotten more than you wished for, but, but congratulations, and I have no doubt you're going to do a good job for the city, so, welcome. And I want to also state that I believe you are the first female city manager of the city of Rialto.
That's correct.
Councilmember, uh, Andy Cudicetis?
Congratulations. I look forward to your leadership. You've done a great job here the last few years that you've worked with us. I really look forward to having you as our leader here in the city of Rialto and taking to Rial, taking Rialto to the next level. Thank you.
Any other members wish to make comment? Carla?
Uh, yes, I had an opportunity to work with Tanya briefly, uh, when I was previously on council, and so I'm glad that, you know, you're still here, and now you're in a, uh, in this new role, and I know that you're more than capable. Congratulations.
Councilmember, uh, Montes?
Yeah, so, uh, I'm new here, and, uh, I, I welcome you to your position, and I'm sure you welcome me to mine. Uh, so I look forward to working with you, and I'm, I'm really excited. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Um, I also would like to congratulate you, uh, Tanya, uh, in her position as a new, uh, city manager. We look forward to your leadership. We look forward to stability. Uh, we've had a series of variety of different city managers over at least the, the two years that I've been on the council. I've seen so many city managers come and go, and acting city managers, but we're looking for that stability, and I think, uh, with your experience of being here over three years, uh, you've had the opportunity to work with each and every one of the departments, including our, our fire chief, Brian, and, and our captain, as well from, uh, our chief from, uh, the police department, along with the various departments, uh, here today. I think that experience alone, uh, stood over many of the other individuals as well. Uh, and we look forward, uh, to moving the city forward and looking at what Rialto looks like today and what you'll make it look like in the future. And we, hopefully, that your stay here will be longer than three months, you know, and I say that for, because the last city manager only lasted three months. So, hopefully, that, uh, that we, we look forward to a long, long, uh, working relationship, uh, and you taking this city forward, and you working with a lot of our residents in the city too as well, and with all of the department heads that we have. So, with that, again, congratulations, and we look forward to working with you. Thank you. Uh, with that, that concludes our business for the day. Now, we'll move on to council reports. Any member of the council? I'll start with, uh, Edward Montoya, you're on my left.
Uh, I, I have nothing new to report.
Okay, thank you. Carla?
And nothing to report either. Thank you.
Andy?
No reports.
Scott? I just have one thing for the city attorney. Uh, Mr. City Attorney, can you take a look at the ordinance related to soliciting, um, of our residents in the community specifically? And, and I, I think we have a sufficient, uh, no soliciting ordinance, but one of the issues that has come up, uh, and has been ongoing is the solar companies and these contractors that pound on everybody's doors, and, um, I myself have no trespassing, no soliciting signs on my house, uh, which seems to be very effective, but I just want to make sure we have the most up-to-date and accurate no soliciting ordinance in our city, because it's very irritating to have somebody come to your front door and say that they're a city employee, and they want to talk to you about your electric bill and your solar, when you kind of know they're not a city employee, because you've been with the city for twenty-three years. Um, and, um, I've gotten some complaints from one of the members of our audience today about it, and I've experienced it myself. Um, and we, as residents, should have a right whether or not people come to our front door and solicit.
Yes, of course. We'll look into that, and I'm assuming that's a door-to-door salesman.
Yes, correct.
Yes, yes, sir.
Okay, thank you. Uh, any other reports left?
Well, before you go, before you go on, Mayor, Mayor Protam, uh, yes, I was gonna, um, I, I do have a complaint, but I want to sample into the record, and then I will, uh, provide each and every one of you a copy of one of the complaints that is also talking about, uh, soliciting as well. So...
Okay, thank you. Uh, at this time, then, I'll, any other comments you want to make or report? Uh, I have the, I'll call on, uh, our city attorney?
Uh, thank you, Mayor. Uh, my office is working up a guidance, uh, piece for not only the council and staff at the police department with regard to certain executive orders that the federal government has issued recently, uh, specifically those related to cooperation with immigration officials. Uh, it's kind of a murky area, but we're gonna, been working with the chief, and we'll provide some guidance to that, and we'll provide that to the council also.
Thank you very much. Our city clerk, Barbara McGee, have any report you want to give?
No, not at this time.
Okay. Our treasurer, uh, Edward Carrillo?
I have nothing to report. Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, our next, I'll, I'll call on, uh, our, uh, community, uh, Director of Commu-, uh, Community Development.
Yes, uh, thank you, Mayor. Uh, we do have a tour tomorrow, uh, out in Ontario at the Haven Street Market. Uh, we'll be looking at retailers and foodie-type restaurant tour opportunities to see what we can recruit, uh, into Rialto. Uh, staff is also preparing for an EDC at the end of February, on February twenty-seventh. I did have the opportunity to speak to the Carson Companies, which is the developer of the Vulcan Materials Site. Um, he, uh, certainly is, uh, excited and looks forward to having a, a good thorough discussion about, you know, where their project is at and how it's progressing with the county, and any next steps that, uh, um, anyone wishes to embark on, county, city, and even the developer themselves. Uh, and then also, we're preparing for ICSC, which is coming up in May, uh, on booth locations, booth design, and, uh, a lot of real estate, uh, handouts that market cities, um, retail centers, um, retail center properties that we have, at least a half a dozen that will be, uh, prepared and ready to, uh, market at that conference.
Thank you. Next, I'll call on Director of Maintenance and Facilities, uh, Tim Sullivan.
Thank you, Mayor. Um, Household Hazardous Waste is this weekend. It's Friday and Saturday, so it's from, uh, eight AM till noon. And then, uh, I'd also like to welcome, the city has a new city engineer, Matt Bennett. He joins us from the city of Highland. And, uh, in closing, I want to thank the city council for all of their vision and support in public, uh, public works, and they're pursuing different and various grants. Uh, overall, the average, looking at the last ten years, we've been successful around three-point-two million dollars per year. Uh, as we closed out twenty-twenty-four, because of council's support, we were able to bring in eight-point-six million, far above the ten-year average, and we're also on track to potentially receive forty-three million. So, it's been a very successful and productive year, and I want to thank everyone for your support, vision, and, and help with this. So, thank you.
Thank you. Next, I'll call on our Director of Parks Recreation on Community Service, Cynthia.
Good evening, Mayor, Mayor Protam, and members of the council. Uh, Thursday is our Senior Sweetheart Dance at Grace Vargas Senior Center. The event will be from three to six PM. Uh, the Teen Center's Valentine's Day Party will be Friday, February fourteenth, at the Teen Center here at the Rialto Community Center, three to six PM. Tiny Tots, Grams for Grands will be at the Grace Vargas Senior Center, Friday, February fourteenth, from one to three PM. This Saturday, our Reck and Roll Program will be located at Joe Sampson from ten AM to two PM. Feeding America Food Distribution will be at Grace Vargas Senior Center, Wednesday, February nineteenth, from nine to eleven AM. Uh, President's Day, all the city offices will be closed, so enjoy your holiday. Department of Aging and Adult Services Bus Just, Bus Pass Distribution will be at Grace Vargas Senior Center, Wednesday, February nineteenth, from ten to eleven AM. Little Tots Variety Sports, uh, starts at Carl Johnson Center, Saturday, February twenty-second, from nine to eleven AM. Girl Softball Opening Day at Frisbee Park will be Saturday, February twenty-second, from seven AM to nine AM. Tiny Tots Session for March opens up on February, Friday, twenty-eighth, at seven AM. Youth Sports Summer, uh, Season Registration opens Monday, March third, at seven AM, both online and in person here at the community center. The Teen Center will be taking a field trip to the San Diego Zoo on Saturday, March eighth, and they will also be hosting their Smash Brothers Video Game Tournament on March fourteenth, from four to six PM. Still waiting on the baseball leagues to give us their times for opening day, but March fifteenth will be that day. And then our Spring Extravaganza will be, uh, Saturday, April nineteenth, from ten to two at Frisbee Park.
Thank you. Uh, next, I'll call on our, uh, fire chief, Brian Park.
Thank you, sir. Um, so, city manager Williams might have stole the thunder tonight, but we're gonna have storms starting tomorrow through Friday, the heaviest coming Thursday. We're gonna have several inches on Thursday, so all of our socials have all of our information for sandbags, and, uh, great work by Tim and his public works crew by facilitating that and keeping our roads as, as clear as they can be. Um, so, you know, rain the next three days, uh, so bring your umbrella. Uh, Cancer Awareness Month, and so, you know, on our, again, on our socials, a lot of, uh, resources on cancer prevention, cancer awareness, nutritional guides, testing, um, so please be aware of cancer and thoughts for our family and friends we've lost to cancer. Um, also, American Heart Month, uh, we're helping, uh, kick off American Heart Month by providing CPR training to all of our sister departments, and so that starts this month as well with some of our, uh, sister department agencies. Goal is to have all of our city employees CPR, AED, and ARCAN, uh, trained, and so we're starting that off with Heart Month and working on that throughout the year. And that's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you. I know that there's a heavy rainstorm that's coming. Are there locations for sandbags if people want to request or get sandbags?
Yes, sir. Always have sandbags at the Public Works Building, uh, two forty-six South Willow, um, Fire Station two oh three, fifteen fifty, uh, North Ila, and Fire Station, uh, two oh four on North Alder, thirty-two eighty-eight North Alder.
Thank you.
Do we need to bring our own shovel?
Need to bring your own shovel. Yes, thank you.
Thank you. Uh, next, I'll call on our, uh, police chief, Mark Lane.
Thank you, Mayor. Mayor Protam and council, uh...
Mayor Protam and council, just a couple of updates. I mentioned last, last meeting that the department was gonna hold a all-hands-on-deck meeting, which we just held, and it just kind of really helped focus, I believe, the direction of the department, specifically in your vision too. So what we're looking at right now is a fairly substantial reorganization of the, of the agency. We're looking at shift reassignments in addition to actually expanding some of our shifts. I'm gonna have staff work on that. I think why is that important to us is because it's gonna give us a little bit more coverage throughout the day during those busier times and also during shift, shift-change times. In addition to that, we've already set the foundation because of the personnel that you've given us as far as expanding into seven days a week with our records bureau. Something that's always bothered me is the fact that the community has to wait for the department to open instead of us being open for them. So as we start looking down the road in conjunction with this brand-new police facility, the goal is to have us up seven days a week, and then we're gonna expand our hours. You know, ultimately, I think we have a very good possibility to open us up for records for twenty-four hours a day, and I think that's just something that is long overdue. It's something that public service and public safety used to do, and that's one of the things that we're really looking at. Staff has a lot of work ahead of them. I think that we are in a good position right now with staffing. We're probably close to being full with our police officers, which hasn't always been the case. We made some adjustments internally, moved some people around, moved some people out of the organization, that I think has really helped us to really start looking for, towards the future. Our council knows that in the, February the twenty-eighth is the Police Department Recognition Dinner. I think that for those of you that can attend, you'll actually see the hard work that this, this police department does for the community, but more importantly, what they do for you. And in addition to that, tomorrow you'll be receiving, and not trying to get in front of the city manager here, certainly, but there's a promotional ceremony that you're all gonna be invited to on March the fourth in the afternoon, working around your schedules, where I am going to promote, I've already announced those promotions, for captains, lieutenants, sergeants, and corporals that will be the foundation for the movement of this police department going forward. We have a lot of work to do ahead of us. I will tell you right now that we are known for proactive policing in this community. We want people to know that when they come to this community, to enjoy. If you're gonna come here and cause problems and commit crime, you'll meet Rialto PD, and you're gonna go to jail. And I think that's what council's direction was to me when I came back in seventeen, and we're getting to that point now. So thank you so much.
Thank you very much. As far as the mayor's report, I really don't have a report, but I'd like to state that the subcommittee has gotten together and has looked at the consolidating and coming back with a recommendation that will have to be done through reorganizations, because I know a lot of people in the community are very much interested in serving on some of these commissions. So once it's approved and done, we'll come back and we'll make the appointments to the variety of different commissions that are vacant, and then decide who has been on there and who has not in terms of absentees during that period of time. But I just wanted to let the community know that we are very much concerned and want to make sure that we have the individuals that can be appointed to the variety of different commissions that we'll have representing the city of Rialto. With that, that concludes my report. Do I have a motion? So moved. Motion by Ed Scott to adjourn. Do I hear a second?
Second.
Seconded by Ed Montoya. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 All those opposed, motion carries. Council's adjourned.